Hi, Mike. Hey, this is Brian.
We don't have a call.
Have you read the notice? No, I've not. Are we on that? I think we're already on. Okay, good evening. Welcome to the December fourteenth, two thousand and sixteen Scarborough Zoning Board of Appeals meeting, running about ten minutes late, but here we are. Can we do a roll call, please?
Mr. Blaze?
Here.
Ms. Shoup?
Here.
Mr. Hebert? Mr. Maroon?
Here.
Mr. Stark? Mr. Crockett?
Here.
And Mr. Richard.
Okay, this is Sam for Pudge Allegiance. Pudge Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with no end. For those of you who didn't know, this flag is half-mast today because of John Glenn. And I didn't, I didn't know why.
Can you speak up? The hearing's been...
Oh, sorry. Well, for those of you who don't know, the flag is half-mast, and I didn't know why, so this guy knows it all, so he says John Glenn, which I would say is appropriate. We first have approval of the minutes of two thousand and nine, I'm sorry, November ninth, two thousand and sixteen. Do we have a motion?
Will we have to approve this presented?
Second?
Second.
Discussion on that motion. Seeing none, all in favor?
Abstain.
And three, yes, and abstain. Thank you very much. There's one item to add to the agenda. If it's, the board will allow me to just enter it immediately and get it off the table. It's a letter or an extension from Mr. Young. You remember this from the meeting on July thirteenth, two thousand and sixteen, on two forty-four Payne Road, we had given him approval, and he has got a family member in Vietnam that's ill, and needs to know if he can get an extension, so if the board is okay with that, I'll bring it to the record. And then we'll vote on it. We don't have to go anything, with a new rule, we can, we can allow it for one time. Dear Mr. Mark Maroon, my name is Brian Young. The address of two forty-four Payne Road, Scott Romeo, four oh seven four, home occupation permit, had approved on July thirteenth, two thousand and sixteen, appeal number twenty-five seventy-eight expires in six months, which is January thirteenth, two thousand and seventeen. I am writing you this letter because I'm respectfully, gently asking you to help expand my permit time to help me financially in my family matter. Recently, a member of the family got cancer in Vietnam. I'm sorry to hear that, Mr. Young. I personally, thanks for your time, I appreciate your help. So I bring this forward as in form of a motion to extend for another six months past January thirteenth, two thousand and seventeen, which would bring us to July thirteenth, two thousand and seventeen.
Seventeen.
So I have a motion to approve that.
To extend.
Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor? That's unanimous. I hope all goes well for you, Mr. Young. I'm sorry, let me do that. Okay, we'll jump into the normal appeals here. The first appeal is two five eight seven, a grievance appeal requested by David Haskell and Sarah Douglas, nine Shipwreck Road, this is map U one, parcel eighty. If you'd like to take my phone, this is a revisit from a request to table.
Good evening. I'm Karen Haskell, wife of David Haskell. Sarah Douglas and her husband Greg live in Fort Myers, Florida, and we're not here this evening, and we regret that our draftsman Travis Kenny, who represented us last time we were here, has been called away in Boston with his son, couldn't make it tonight, so I apologize, so I'll be representing our appeal. We handed out or delivered to each of you a reference packet. I tried to put this together just to make any reference a little bit easier, and realized...
Did a nice job with it. Did a nice job with it.
Thank you. So the first segment is exactly the application we submitted initially two months ago. The biggest area of question was the way we had responded to the four questions specifically that asked for variance, and so I provided an addendum, I've updated those responses. The third segment of this are just some holdout elements of all of the work that we did, some of the graphics, visuals of the survey map, footprint plan showing the proposed bump out, those kinds of things. And at the back of the, of tab four, some of you had shown some interest in seeing visually some of the deterioration we are experiencing at our cottage. The rotting roof, deteriorating and crumbling chimney, and fireplace structure, and...
Especially like the pipe. I especially like the pipe.
Anyway, those are all of you. But I'd like to plug you in on tonight is segment two, the responses that we updated as answer to the first question. The land in question, the property, as you know, was purchased by the family in nineteen forty-six. A lot has been done to the property since then, except for some increment of a garage that was washed out into the road at the storm, and that was attached to the house, and further that we did a close-in the back porch with windows, to make it more livable. The cottage does sit on a lot size that's smaller than any other lot in the area, as you know. All the other lots on the street are fifty feet wide and ours is forty feet wide, we believe, just because initially the town had wanted that speed.
Could you do me a favor and just grab that hand? If you could grab that hand, Mike, when you do it, just tap on it to make it just live.
And then, no, it's got a touch. Initially, the, I think...
Just on the bottom there, I think it'll switch it.
Okay. So, Verdapp Street, we think that was a paper street. They initially thought Verdapp might go through all the way to the beach, which is why this is forty feet wide. So that's one of the areas that is causing us, I think, the most challenge as we try to do anything. What that precipitates as we start to take a look now at the major structural, mechanical, and electrical issues with the camp. We've since our last meeting met with two separate building professionals to discuss the scope of the work that we need to be done to repair these issues, and start to get our pricing together, take a look at exactly what would happen as they begin that work. That causes us, as we think about the amount of expense, the investment that would be required to make these repairs, in particular, taking down that chimney and fireplace, literally not just replacing the roof. That will create a large hole, and they're going to have to literally take that chimney out of there, which will destroy most of the roof that's already there. So that, that's going to be at a considerable cost. So what we're asking, as we think about that investment as a family, and how the cottage is used today, we are saying we would like to have the more consider our ability to extend our living space, expand our living space, and since the fact that we're in, I think, four restricted zones, we have nowhere to go, on either side, to the front, or to the street side, or to the both sides, as you know. The only way we can get any additional reprieve on our living space is to go up. So the first area we're asking for is an allowance so that it's raised the roof ridge. By raising the roof ridge, we would raise the center of the ridge four and a half feet without raising the edges of the wall. It would result in a story and a half building, sort of a one-story building. That would also improve the slope.
One of the reasons that the amount of water damage that it has is because the slope was too permanent. Where the porch needs to move, water must suck up here. So by allowing us to raise the ridge, the pitch down, ultimately eliminate that, and eliminate that wall, which makes a big difference in improving what's going on there. The second, and you have these visuals in your packet, I'm sure you know, the second request for a variance is in creating a second story, or second floor, for living, primarily speaking of storage, we need to make room on the first floor for a stairway that's closed and blind, and that's difficult to do in a small space that we have now, without asking for some movement on one of the laws we're asking for, an extension to the footprint at the street side in one corner of the cottage. Basically, halfway here, place no further where the problem lies. This side of which now, halfway to the left, we basically, from Verdapp view, basically the motion pending by the city of the land at this point, I think, some of the, I don't know, I showed, the land that boosts the doorway, the door here, which tend to require porch and stairs, that's an option, but that's our only option. It's due about maybe a hundred and fifty, maybe a hundred and thirty. Don't have that for us. Right in my, 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 any...
I'm sorry, I still forgot about the microphone, if you could do me a favor, sorry. Just want to make sure, but I, I fault. So which, which way are you proposing tonight? As, as, as the plan is proposed here?
In reading, in reading Brian's comments that he shared with all of you, I know that there's concern about the parking spaces. We currently park three cars at the cottage. Right now, we park two cars, and we've been parking one car straight in. So what we, what we would lose is the ability to pull a car in here, although if you have a small car, you could probably kitty-corner it here and get three cars still where we're parking currently, which is on the lawn area between the cottage and the basement.
The two cars in front there are back against, is that side?
This is street.
Okay, so back, is that on your property?
Pardon?
The two cars that you park currently, is that on the street or is that on the, on the property?
It's...
You said you have a total of three.
It's lawn, but it's, it's, if you look at the property line, it, it would technically be, some of that is town property.
But it's, it's grass.
It's grass.
Okay, that, that's really counted.
That's grass. This has, had always been, because this was a garage, had always been driveway, and now there, now there's some green on there, but we believe that under that is crushed rocks from when it was originally a driveway, which is why we, we believe that this is going to be allowable, that this is impervious. But those are really the two primary things that were coming before you, to ask for the, for those two variances, and the ability to raise the ridge of the roof out of the front and a small back dormer, and then to do some, to increase the living space so we can begin the work to do all of the tremendous enhancements and improvements we need to make to progress.
Thank you.
Yeah, as David's right, we sat in a lot of the meetings when the town was going through the character base coating, and we feel that this would have tremendous impact on the aesthetic of our cottage, but also on just the aesthetic of the Higgins Beach overall. In particular, with just, right now, our roof is quite flat, and this is not a final, but it's a representation of what we would hope to achieve. Right now, the roof ridge is here, and it's very low and flat, and by elevating the middle and allowing us to create more of a porch look over what's now the porch anyway, and adding a dormer, it would be much more in keeping, I think, with the character of the aesthetics that the character base zoning is looking for.
Thank you. Just wanted to, you want to clarify your comments about parking or anything else you prefer to add to this conversation?
Yeah, I'm just trying to make the board aware that down on Shipwreck, there is a concern about parking. It's already pretty cramped down there. There are some cottages that have a very difficult time providing on-site parking for their, their automobiles, and so they start to creep out onto the street. So I think it's something that the board should weigh carefully as they look at infilling that, that piece. And I understand what the Haskells are trying to do and, and why, but it's still a concern with the parking aspect. The other thing I want to mention too, and I'm sure the Haskells know this, is that most of the, the repairs, the photos, which were very helpful, that you included, some of the things that are, that need to be addressed in the cottage, could be addressed without need of a variance. Those things, in and of themselves, are not necessarily an argument for the variance. They are definitely expensive things to fix, is definitely going to be an investment, but I just want to clarify that the variance isn't predicated on, or the repair of those issues isn't predicated on getting a variance to do them. The only things that require the variance are the infill sections and the raising of the roof, and possibly, and we've talked about this, the fact that all of this work would probably trigger substantial improvement, and where it's in the floodplain, that would mean elevating the building if it needs to be elevated. We don't have an elevation certificate, I don't believe, yet.
We have an elevation certificate. I think it was in your packet. I have, I have it with me.
I apologize.
I didn't see it.
I have it with me. I can leave it.
Twelve feet, two inches, and what are you? And you're planning on that? I think you have, it hits fifty percent.
If it's fifty percent more than the...
I can tell you right now, it'll be fifty percent.
Well, it depends on how much work you do in any particular year, is that correct?
That's correct.
So we, what we might do in that point is do a portion of the work, maybe the exterior proportion of the work, or a bit, one year, and then...
Well, and if you try to do it that way, you should also be aware that sometime, we're told sometime in two thousand and eighteen, the new floodplain mass will be in play, and the elevation will actually be higher than that. So you may, you don't want to play the waiting game, I guess, too long, or then you're going to end up in a situation where you've got part of your work done at one elevation, and now you're going to need to elevate the rest.
That's quite well taken.
And to be candid with you, a good argument for this being a variance is the fact that you need to raise it, and I, I wouldn't want to, I would, to me, one of the things I would...
But they can, but they can do that. Remember, they can do that now, simply elevating the cottage for floodplain compliance, they can do.
Right.
That doesn't require variance. What requires a variance is changing that roof pitch on the non-conforming parts of the existing cottage. So it's very, it's a very complicated, there's a lot of moving parts to this thing, but I just want to clarify what triggers the variance versus what could be done without a variance. It's important for the board to understand the difference.
Yeah, and we're aware of that, I think, as we started to think about, again, it's going to be a sizable expense if we did nothing in terms of raising the roof or asking for a bump out. To go through that kind of investment and not enhance living space, if anything, it might even restrict it a little bit more, that's, you know, it just seems, it seems like a halfway job.
So let me open up the public hearing on this. Anybody from the public like to speak on this issue? I will close the public hearing part. We do have one letter? And do we have any from the previous meeting? I don't remember. I'm on staff. I'm responding to the notification.
I can't even hear you, and I'm sitting right beside you.
Okay, it's a tough crowd. Let me make you read it. I'm responding to the notification. I have received regarding appeal number twenty-five eighty-seven, a request by David and Sarah Douglas for relief from the dimensional standards for their property at nine Shipwreck Road. The setback variance being requested will eliminate all of the space now available for off-street parking. The only space left to park will be along Shipwreck Road. The variance, I can't read that word, being requested will have, or will leave this a fringe in the Shipwreck, very narrow... this a frontage in the Shipwreck, very narrow, uh-
Ranging.
Ranging in width from one foot to thirty-four.
About one foot, three.
Three, oh, okay, one foot, three inches to six foot, eight inches. Between the three of us, we're actually pretty good at this. Since this is a lot, it's forty feet wide, the available space for parking seems to be, uh, in the inadequate as now proposed, Nancy Strong, seven Shipwreck. And on the back, nothing.
I, I did receive an email, um, from another Shipwreck Road resident, um, the Naden's at seventeen Shipwreck. Um, in their email, they, they were addressing several issues not necessarily related to the Haskell thing, because they're also contemplating a variance request. Um, but they said, "There is talk in the neighborhood about Haskell's proposal and the difficulty with ma- maintaining parking places. People really don't want to establish a precedent of parking so close to the street and along the right-of-way, especially if there are other options." And they, they're the ones that, that have posed, um, the question, "Have David and his sister Sarah considered the possibility of lifting their cottage and putting parking spaces underneath similar to the LaRue Cottage on the corner of Bayview and Champion? Might that work for them with, with only a forty-foot, uh, road frontage? They have a real challenge. I don't know if it's appropriate for you or someone on the board to offer that suggestion, and that's not what I'm doing by reading this letter. Uh, and maybe this has already been discussed, but it's just an idea that I thought I'd pass along." And again, those are comments from, uh, that should go into the public comments.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, so, uh, seeing nobody asking any questions, and that no phone calls have been made, I'll close the public part of the meeting, and I'll come to the board, questions or comments.
Yeah, I've, I've got a question. I went out there yesterday and, and took a look at all the cottages along Shipwreck. And that cottage is by far the closest to the road, and all the other cottages are set back closer to the ocean. Why can't this be moved closer to the ocean?
Because, uh, the seventy-five foot, you know, we, that was one of the first questions that we asked, but DEP wouldn't, does not allow, they won't let us build out over that deck or put even a roof over it. We can't do anything that encroaches closer to the ocean.
But your neighbors are encroaching closer to the ocean?
But grandfather.
Is that just because they're, they've-
Grandfathers.
I'm, I'm sorry, if you'd be fair, just state your name, address, and, yeah, they, they, we're, we're live on TV, a lot of people are watching.
We talked to the, uh, DEP when we first met with them, and we proposed the, the issue about moving closer to the resource, they said absolutely not. Uh, we asked them about deeding down and trying to get parking under the camp, they said absolutely not. Um, so, you know, you can approve everything here, and they're going to veto it anyway. So, I mean, you know, you can't get a straight answer from, seems like either body, it's very frustrating in terms of, but we thought about that, um, and, uh, you know, they, they, they're saying no.
What is the DEP, DEP approved so far, or said they'd allow? Is this proposal then sent to the DEP?
Well, it's been a moving target, to be truthful.
This proposal, the way this now has not, we've had-
Yeah.
-three sit-down meetings, general conversations with them, and perhaps had several discussions with them, but we haven't put forth a final plan at this point until we, until we, we wanted to know what we were doing before we could implement, implement the trial.
Okay. Most of you have some-
Yeah, I, just to clarify too, I, I think, I think what they're proposing to do, um, as far as the existing cottage and elevating it, that's not going to be a DEP problem. Um, that's clearly because the lot, the DEP is going to consider the lot a hundred percent developed, under their terminology, in the sand dune regulations. In other words, there's very little natural, I, I shouldn't say a hundred percent, maybe there's a portion up near the beach that they might consider under.
Did they say exactly?
Did they say a hundred percent? That's generally, everybody's already kind of developed their lot in one way, shape or, or form. So, so they, what they then go back to is the twenty percent coverage by buildings, and that's one of their regulations. The Haskell's, like several others along Shipwreck, have several different things that are constraining their ability to do anything with their cottage, and I just want to make that clear. You can't move forward in the shoreline zone. You, they're already partially in the seventy-five foot setback, so there's no moving forward. If they weren't in the seventy-five foot setback, they could move forward, if the dune regulation's allowed it. Most of the time, in the back dune, they would allow you to move forward. In the frontal dune, I don't think they would. So, so they're in the frontal dune, they're in the erosion hazard area, they're in the shoreline zone, and they're in the floodplain. So they've got the, the trifecta, probably plus one.
And the fifteen mile, that was on the thing.
We have the fighting bunch.
Huh?
We're in the fighting lover zone.
Fighting lover zone.
So.
To the point about brighter, uh, parking under the cottage, you know, uh, let's say the DEP didn't say that that was not possible, would, is that, does that have to go before the town to raise the cottage enough to get a car below?
Well, that would be, that would be part of your, part of your proposal, but I think where that's coming from is that if you're gonna, if the improvements that you're contemplating are going to trigger substantial improvement, then you're going to have to elevate anyway. And then in elevating for floodplain, you can elevate further as long as you haven't gone above the, the thirty-five foot height limit. And you're probably not that close, but I don't know if you can elevate far enough to get a car underneath there.
No, no.
I just don't know if that's possible. Well, that's the other problem. I mean, that's the other problem, is that sometimes it just doesn't work with the lot. And then in elevating, you got to create access-
Height, creating-
Which sometimes can happen in the middle, you know, underneath, you can have a stairwell underneath, you know, in the footprint, not outside it, but that may not work with your floor plan. So I mean, there are all these other, um, angles that would have to be looked at.
And to help you ea-, just from a practical point of view, to ease the stress, the truth is that none of what you want to do is allowed. So everybody here is on your side, by, even talking to them. So when you look at the people that are doing it, whether the state or us, state's getting paid, we do it volunteer work, town does it, because they try to do the right thing. The truth is, you're not really getting a runaround, you're getting an opportunity to fix a problem that isn't allowed to be fixed. So it's a good thing that people are working with you. It's a bad thing when they say no. So that's why last time we postponed you to bring back some better information. I know it's frustrating, um, but no solves the problem really fast, and any agency can do that at any point, and so the, the goal is to get, get what you want, and recognize that they're really, they're not out to get you, they're just stuck with four rules. Like, we, we, there are a lot of rules in here we don't like, but we just don't have to, we just, I hope they're just-
There's, there's some flexibility, we, we, we spend quite a lot of time, uh, going to the meetings and going through this character-based, uh, uh, changes in the code, and they're hopefully going to try and dovetail it with the state, which may or may not have happened. But clearly, there was an aesthetic element involved in this whole process.
It's-
And, and I think, doesn't that give you some flexibility? I understand, I understand that it's black and white on the shoreline, but with this character-based thing, I mean, you read through that, and there are all kinds of contradictions, and, you know, terms aren't defined, and you talk to three people and you get three different opinions.
Right. And it's, it's a, a great attempt with a lot of time and a lot of effort to make it as flexible as possible in a place that really should be half-acre lots, and none of them are, they're forty or fifty feet high, a hundred. And the sad reality is that a lot of, a lot of, I don't want to get too, too local here, but the, the reality is that area has major problems. This board has the ability to help you through that, um, but it's restrained by so many regu- the same regulations you're, you're dealing with, plus. And the attempt that was put together to, character-based, was to eliminate the need to come to us on simple items, and to make some things more flexible, the reality is it actually made it difficult for some others, uh, because anything, it, it's sort of like when you take a, they, they give you a, a vitamin, and they say there's no harmful side effects, or there's no side effects, well, there's no side effects, there's no effects, right? So it doesn't do anything. So, so the same thing. If, if, everything has a consequence. So every thing that's, anytime you change anything, you're going to have a ripple effect, and sometimes it benefits people and sometimes it doesn't. The goal is to help as many as you can. Let's get back to the point on this.
I just asked one more question.
Sure.
If you read that, uh, first question that we had to answer.
Right, the most important one.
Um, and, and quote from that, like, say, practical laws, virtually all usable use of this lane, the variance is not granted.
If you read the state's definition of that, you would not even be here.
Well, no, what I'm saying, if you follow that, you would never, ever pass an appeal.
That's correct.
Never given the appeal.
I would agree with you if it's taken literally.
But you don't take that literally.
I wouldn't ha-
Clearly, there is some flexibility, isn't there not?
No, there's not, there's not. We're gonna, if, if we believe that it meets that standard, we will approve it, but we've got to believe it meets that standard of virtually no value. And, um, probably not the best place to be discussing that, to be candid with you, um, is on, on this, you know, at this time. Because we're going to do the best we can to look at this and make a sound decision, meeting the federal, the state laws, and that state law is a tough law to meet.
Chairman Maroon, it's, uh, if we were to separate these two requests, the raising the roof and adding the dormers as one part, bump out as another, can you separate those two and maybe?
We could divide the question.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll give you my personal opinion, is if you want to let the least pain, this is just a personal opinion, I'll speak for myself and the board. If you go in the footprint and you want to go up, my guess is most of the board will say fine. Because it's going to cost you well over half, it's going to cost you one hundred thousand dollars to repay that house. And I would argue personally that if you're putting two hundred thousand dollars into a property, it has proven that it has no value, as it sits. And I, I would argue, the other piece that, if it's in a flood zone, we already know the flood insurance is going to be going up by as much as ten times. It's behind by twelve. So right now, it's, if, if you've been following the news on that at all, you're going to see some nasty flood increases of pr- fees, and probably requirements. So I think those are pretty, pretty good arguments to justify no practical use of the property. That's me. But I would probably stop there, and I don't believe that you'd find any resistance along the way from that. I think you'd probably fail through the rest of the process. That's just an opinion, and Ms. Longstaff may have a different opinion, and the board may have a different opinion.
And does that mean we would have to come back with just that part of our request, or can that be discussed tonight?
If you would like to, uh, ask us to divide the question into just the issue of the footprint and work out with, um, Slone Staff staff, the entrance way, I don't personally have a problem with that, does the board have a problem with dividing the question on this?
Shall we do that, Brian? I don't, I don't have a problem if it's done. You folks said you had, had an elevation certificate.
Yes.
I don't see in the packets at all, so I'm not sure.
But wasn't, is it not behind? We're going to transfer this package to the first.
First application.
Hi.
What'd you say, twelve foot, two?
The lowest, the lowest transfers, uh, number of the floor, it's close to these two inches above the whatever, the, 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 my watermark, whatever the, whatever they, they, I never quite understood it, what it came out.
This is a coffee.
So if the board is comfortable with me dividing the question, eliminating the second part, and just dealing with the part that is the footprint, I would suggest that we do that. Does the board have a problem with that?
I would follow your lead.
Explain to me again what you want to do. You want to leave the footprint exactly the way it is?
Well, they've got two, basically, the appeal is broken into, into two pieces, although it's really not defined that way, it's the, it's two different issues.
Yeah, they want to raise the roof, which, which doesn't-
And then expand succeed.
Right. And raising the roof doesn't, doesn't change the footprint.
Correct. And I believe that if they're, they're, they're experiencing the nightmare that they're experiencing, partially because they're trying to do something that I know can't be done. So I'm trying to save them some time. No matter what we say, if we give them one inch, two inches, they're not going to get, they're not going to get approved. So we could give them an inch, and then it's not, I don't believe it will get past, you may, but I don't believe it. Yeah, DEP, I think we could give you, we could give you twenty feet, and you won't get past the DEP. I don't believe, I mean, I, just my experience. I mean, you may be able to, it's just a, but I do know that watching this over the last twenty years, um, if you stay in the footprint, I've yet to see the DEP say no. I don't know if you've seen anything different than that.
I think historically, if you've been within the footprint, we have, as a board, allowed it, but going outside of that footprint and doing addendums or adding on, like you're suggesting, we haven't allowed it.
Okay.
Because it doesn't, it just doesn't, in my mind, it doesn't meet the reasonable return. Going up and staying within the footprint, you're not intrusing anymore, we've already got a couple of people that have addressed parking problems down there, that have written in, taken the time to write in to us. I think it's going to be very difficult to expand that.
Okay. Um, I guess I just need some direction on where we go from here, if we kept that.
You're okay with me dividing the question, what I'll do is to, is request the board to take a vote to divide, divide, technically, we're not dividing the question as in a typical rubbish rules of order situation, but we're taking the request, and we're dividing the request, because it is two finite items. In this case, it's very finite. We, we're talking about raising the roof and doing what you want to do, and then specifically adding a section in a block. Well, normally, we don't go rewriting the regulations, we've made that mistake before, rewriting your packages, we've made that mistake before and we didn't do, we didn't do that. But that is very finite. So if we said, and as you pointed out, you have other options. So if we eliminate that part, take that off the table, so it would become, it would become something like this, I have moved to approve the motion as requested without any expansion of the footprint. And that's what the motion I would recommend be made. And then we'd have to go through the criteria and justify why we made that decision that would be able to hold up in court. We just asked him before the meeting started, that, that we've got one in court now, that I was asking how we're coming with. So that we believe that we could support our position and, and win that argument, if, if it were a challenge, and either, once we make that vote, we stay at our positions, and it falls where it falls. Um, okay? So if the board's comfortable, let's continue that path, um, and, uh, that would be my motion at the end, um, if the board's continuing to, to that issue.
Would, would that require raising the cottage?
Yes.
If the cost of what we're doing is more than fifty percent of the-
Yeah, I, I would, I would put in there that you'd need to raise the cottage, because I, you gotta, you gotta, you gotta, you've got to meet the reasonable return and, and the hardship requirement. And to me, as you pointed out eloquently, you can't meet it. So we need a reason to be able to meet it, and I believe that a raising it to be above the flood zone, especially with what's coming down the pike, um, we're in, we're in flood fees of fifty thousand dollars a year for some people and some properties.
If you're going up, you're better to get ahead of it.
Yeah.
Well, we're talking about maybe going up to fifteen, because that's what we're talking about.
You do not want to have flood insurance, you do not want to have, the flood insurance is bankrupt, and there's only one way to get that money back.
And your elevations, it would be who of you to do it.
Yeah, you can speak to it better than I can, insurance side.
Well, I'm, I'm thinking more about raising it enough so that you can have some parking underneath it.
I don't think that's physically possible, but might-
Aesthetically, it probably would not look very pleasing either.
I mean, it's, it's, to me, if, if, to me, on the, the way I look at this is, look, let's keep it simple and clean, give them, if we agree that we use them that, all we're doing is we're talking about the footprint, which we've talked about a hundred times before. Then the question is, does it meet the footprint criteria? And we're not getting into any of the other, because they've got, like they said, they've got three other boards they've got to go through. It makes the job of the other boards much easier, because now there's something they can stand on. This is what Scarborough's accepting. Scarborough's pretty tough, they've got their rules down, they know what they're doing, they're competent people behind the scenes, that carries weight. My guess is, that'll make life easier, and you'll, you'll get through the process. That's just an opinion.
And the more finding of facts that we can come up with when we're doing this, from the information you presented to us in your packet, it's a very good packet, so it allows us to actually come up with some things that we can put in there, that if you hadn't gone as thoroughly as you had, we wouldn't have had that.
You did a good job with the second.
Yeah, you did a good job.
The last first one would have never-
Thank you. Um, so the next step then is for us to now continue with our creative process and get more defined priors?
No, no, I think, I think what the next step is that, uh, you've already, if you're comfortable with us talking about not expanding the footprint, we'll continue down that path and then vote, and make a decision as to whether or not you meet the criteria. If you don't meet the criteria, you can't come back for a year for another request. You can't come back a year later, but you have to wait one year to come back for a similar appeal. If you do make it, then you've got, uh, a very narrow window to start going, but you, my guess is you'll, you'll, my guess is you'll go through the, the rest of the process pretty easily.
I hope so, I don't think our roof is going to hold up for another year.
Well, we wanna talk about that. So, uh, what I'd like to do is come down-
Do you still wanna hold back for the board, 'cause Ed's the only one that asked me questions?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. He's the only one who asked the question.
Anybody else that'll ask questions, or do you wanna go through the questions?
Yeah, yeah, I'm satisfied with what I've asked, so I'm fine.
Well, we're still not addressing parking.
The only thing we're doing is we're leaving the parking where it is, which is no worse or no better.
Right.
Well, the only, the only thing that I'm thinking about is, would this ever be year-round?
Could be. It could be.
And then, if it could be year-round, then parking is an issue.
Right. But the way it is set up now, they have one spot that's on their property.
We're not morsing it.
We're not changing. They do have one legitimate parking spot on their property, if we don't, if we just go with the footprint.
But you actually can get two cars in there.
You can get two cars in there.
If you really squeeze them in tight, you say, "Two cars in there."
There's enough room for two cars.
You've got, you've got about twelve feet from the garage to the front property line.
Yeah, I know. I know. It's tight. I mean, it's-
Little tiny cars.
We parked, we park our two cars there right now.
We'll have to buy, uh, some of those smart cars.
My only concern is in the wintertime, and I went by there in the wintertime, and the snow was right up to the, the front of your cottage.
I would, I would say-
And that was, that's a one, two-inch snowfall.
I would say, if it ever does get winterized, which is a big conversation right now within the family, uh, and it's a controversial conversation, because some people want a winterize, and some don't, it would be rented probably for rental income a little bit of time, probably by one person. It's not a very large cottage. It's got one bathroom. It's, it's not gonna be like there's gonna be two or three cars trying to get in there in the winter.
If you wanna come over here and see this picture, this might help.
This is in your town.
Yeah, I was there yesterday.
You can, you can-
I measured all that stuff.
You could squeeze, you could squeeze two cars.
What was-
Concerning-
Part of the cars are hanging out over the-
But what was concerning-
Over the front property line. That's, that's my only point, okay?
What was concerning is if they infill that space, then there would no longer be the ability to-
I un- I understand that. I understand that fully. All I'm saying is, we're still not addressing the parking issue. That's all I'm saying.
That would be true.
But that's really not on the top.
That would be true.
I think it should be raised up, put the parking underneath it. And it could very well be that other houses along there will have to do the same stuff.
But as a board, you can't mandate that.
No, I'm not saying that. I gotta mandate it.
So, let's not, let's move on, because we're just, we're spinning our wheels, talking about something we can't mandate.
It could be something we would explore with a D E P, but the one time we did explore it, we were shut down pretty quickly, but we could explore it again. That's all I can say.
I don't think you're gonna get very far with it.
So let's, um, what I'd like to do is start, just if anybody else is, is okay, I'd like to start going down through the criteria and talking about each one, and, and maybe asking questions of the applicants, and making that part of the findings and facts. And, uh, so the landing question, cannot you to use a reasonable return unless the variance is granted. Reasonable return does not mean maximum return. Advocate must demonstrate practical laws of virtually all reasonable use of the land if the variance is not granted. Reasonable return is not determined by personal circumstances of the applicant. And, uh, the answer they've got, if, if you've already read that into the record, um, do the board care to have a reread that is into the record, or are you-
Yeah, 'cause I think they changed what they have.
Could you read exactly what you have in here into the record, please?
The whole thing?
Yes, please.
The unheated summer cottage at Nine Shipwreck Road was purchased by the family in nineteen forty-six. Over the past seventy years, the only major update made to the building was in nineteen seventy-eight, when a storm washed the small garage out to the road. After rescuing it, the family decided to attach the garage to the main building to create much-needed sleeping space. In addition, in nineteen ninety, deteriorating windows were replaced, and in two thousand nine, the back porch was closed in to improve living conditions. This cottage sits on a lot size that is smaller than any other lot in the area. All other lots on the street are fifty feet wide, while this lot is only forty feet wide. See attachment A. We believe this lot was originally a paper street to the beach, an extension to Verdapp Street, that the town ultimately decided to sell. The lot size places an extra level of burden to meet the requirements of the new character-based zoning standards. It also poses obvious restrictions to the use of the site and to our opportunity to make enhancements that would allow us to maintain a reasonable return.
Thank you. Um, so, if I could fire some questions at you. I'm looking at this first picture of the rotting and leaking roof. Um, is that from your experts that you've had look at the property? Do you mind giving the names of who you had for contractors to look at the property?
The photographs?
Who, who looked at the properties for you?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
Sulcam Builders from panel, who's built, recently built a home for us, and a gentleman, Greg and Sarah, had him look at it, and his name is, um, Steve Flynn, Flynn, Steve Flynn, Flynn Z Builders, who's done work in Scarborough.
He does a lot of building, Thunsey Construction. Okay. And what, their responses regarding the roof, what, what did they say about the roof? Is it, is it repairable, or is he gonna take it off and start again?
There was a discussion about whether it needed to be totally replaced, or could it be repaired. Initially, Sulcam has been repairing this roof for the last three years, and he felt it was beyond being repaired. Flynn, when looking at it for the first time, initially said it probably could be repaired. While Sarah and Greg were there, we had a bad rainstorm and water came pouring in, and so they brought him back, and he looked at it more closely, saw a lot of the rot, and said the roof needs to be replaced.
Okay.
And if you lifted it up, the roof may not even hold.
Oh, I just, you, you'd take it right off. And most, a lot of it's gonna come off when they deteriorate the chimney, and that, when they, when they dismantle the chimney, they'll do that with some kind of a thing that comes in and pulls it all out.
And with the new codes, you're gonna be required to meet the hurricane codes, the wind speed codes for the roof ties, so it's another whole conversation. Um, what about the, uh, the chimney? Tell me about the chimney. What's the situation?
Chimney, uh, was looked at also in a variety of ways. It, it hasn't been functional for many years, and you can see how badly it's deteriorated.
What do you mean by not functional?
Uh, you can't put a fire in it.
And if you did, what would happen? All right.
The brick, the mortar is all deteriorated.
What would it cost to repair that to be functional?
Uh, Flynn gave us a cost, it was, I think, ten, over ten thousand to repair it, and about six to, to take it out.
All right, so it makes more sense to take it out.
You wanna take it out, right?
Yes, we want, oh, that, we wanna take it out.
Right. Plus, it gives you extra space.
Yes, we need the space.
Right. Mr. Chair, yes.
Because especially without that bump out, we now have to find space for staircase.
The chimney comes down to a fireplace inside right now, is that correct? Okay, so you probably have a shell up by the fireplace where waters come in over the years?
Yeah.
Which would have been like a stove-type shell. That's probably completed, completely rotted out, right?
Probably. I, I don't know.
That would make sense.
Yeah. If the chim- yeah, if your chimney's doing what it's doing, I've seen this before, the water's actually coming in, and whatever you had for a shell, you, you wouldn't be able to start a fire in there, because you'd burn your house down, 'cause of the, the actual shell that was built in there is probably gone. I just wanted to get that out there.
Good, thank you. Uh, looking at the next picture, and anybody wants to jump in, feel free, but I'm just, figured I'd start the ball rolling with the pictures. Um, that looks like, uh, the old black nineteen forties wiring, just after knob and tube. Is that about right, or is that-
Some wiring has been updated, but not all, as you can see by the photograph.
When you put the garage on, uh, they put it to the first, the first, uh, circuit, the dead breaker. And so, everything is not gonna break, so-
You're partially on- Okay, you're partially on, uh, fuses. Okay.
Is there any knob and tube in there at all, to your knowledge?
Uh, is, it sixty amp service? Is it a sixty amp service?
Sixteen amp. I don't know.
Six zero? Probably is. Probably is. I mean, standard now is a two hundred, but a lot of houses are at a hundred. But, um, and then piping. So, it's, we're actually, electrical, I'm looking at the outside wall there, right? In that picture with the, with the light, with the black plugs and the metal, uh, casing. Uh, it says, uh- Yeah, that's electric. I jumped, I'm sorry. I'm back to electric. That, is that typical of what's around the entire house?
Yeah.
Circular outlets, the old circular outlets.
No, there are, there are some that are an outlet. It's, it's still quite visible, but it's not circular. There are some that are, that were added later.
Are they, are they in the wall?
Now, we have like, you know, the extension cords with five things plugged in, which I'm very concerned about fire hazard.
You should be. Okay.
Are the outlets in the wall, or are they on an exposed stud, so you can see the-
On an exposed stud.
Yeah, that's what I, that's the other thing, Mr. Chair, that I wanted to get at. A lot of these cottages, I see the, um, outlets are on the exposed stud. They're not even inside of a wall or anything. You could kinda stick your finger up through the bottom of it if you wanted to.
I might, my son did that. Um, good story. The piping, uh, is that an example of just-
That, that is, that is original to the cottage, and it's galvanized zinc. They're very very old.
Okay. And the, the post behind that, that looks like a relatively new post, um, is that accurate or not? What, what's going on there? Is that the, is that the wooden one, or is that concrete?
No, no, that's the, you know, the whole camper on, uh, concrete, concrete.
Tubes, sauna tubes?
Sauna tubes, right.
Okay. And, and that was, they look, not really an issue, it was, that's what they were all built on. But, okay. Um, and then, in behind that grating there, is that where the deck is?
In behind the where?
See that, where the, where the white, uh, lattices? Is that where the deck is? Is that the deck?
Yeah, that's the outside. That's the, that's the back. That's toward the street.
Okay. Next page, I'm looking at the, the doorways, um, it's the old style knob. I mean, I, from, looking at that doorway, the, it's pretty tired. Um-
The cottage is, uh, obviously shifted to one side. The first picture of the chimney also shows you on the hearth, there's a brick that's just off. The doorway, the door frame is now pulling away from the floor, so we're gonna have to shore up the whole thing and level it again, obviously.
Right. So, the question then is gonna become whether or not they can raise it, level it, flatten it out. What do you got, two by eight construction, two by ten construction? Do you know what's under there? Do you know what the beams are that are, are support beams over there?
I, I'm not sure.
Okay. Do you know what condition they're in?
I'm not a contractor.
No condition, did either of the contractors talk about that?
Oh, the support beams that are in good condition. They said the support, support beams on the bottom are in good condition.
Okay.
And I talked to a mover that said that, uh, that said that he felt that the camp could, uh, stand to be lifted. That was the other question, is whether it was gonna fall apart. But he said that, that, uh, it looked sounded enough, sound enough to be actually lifted, so.
How high?
Easy, easier without-
Did you say how high?
Yeah, I, I, I asked him about going up to, you know, fifteen feet, and I told him we were at twelve two, so.
He said, "No problem."
He said, "No problem."
Without the, without the brick.
No problem with. Low cost.
More expense, more expense. You can't raise it easily with that chimney and fireplace there.
Yeah, and I could raise it all with a fireplace.
You wanna get it out of there.
I think we've got enough finding facts on that one. Don't you?
I'm, I'm feeling fairly good about the fact that, I guess my question is, I, I, if I, I'm looking at this from a practical point of view, has this thing lost its usable, has it lived out its life? And in my opinion, the prob, the building itself has lived out its life for a variety of reasons. For safety reasons, for flood reasons, for pipe reasons, for the, the electrical reasons, for the fireplace reasons. Um, I think you're gonna find out, once you start going, that they're gonna tell you you need to tear the whole thing down. Uh, that won't be the first time that's happened. And that would-
We asked about that, but D E P said we can't, you can't do that in that, in that area.
Depends on, depends on the circumstances, but we'll, just so you know, that, that, you might get that conversation, but I think from a practical point of view, it's seen its, uh, its, its useful life expired. And the question is, does that leave a reasonable return? Well, the reasonable return, I believe, especially from the most recent articles we've been receiving, is that it's designed as a cottage, and that would be a reasonable return. Putting a tent there is not a reasonable return. So, I would argue that, that, and I don't wanna advocate for the clients, the, the people that are before us, but at the same vein, I give them credit for coming here, and they don't know the rules. They don't know the procedures. They don't, they've been, it's not, this is technically a, a quasi-court. Same thing, we're still a town, and we try to work together when we can. And I'm, so I'm, I'm not trying to advocate for them, but I do believe that I don't have the stress they have. So, based on what I see, I think that meets first requirement. So, my position on that is, number one is met.
Do you wanna vote for all of it?
Yes, I'd like to have each person comment. So I'm voting yes, number one is met. And I start with you.
I'm normally the worst advocate of this, and will not normally vote for it, but seeing some of the things and knowing the things with the chimney, uh, I think you've, you've met it there, as well as, uh, some of the other things. I mean, the roof's not gonna withstand, so it's not gonna be much longer. I would normally have a very tough thing doing this. If you weren't agreeing to, to just go up in the footprint, I would say no. But I think with all you've provided to us, with all this additional information with the piping, a lot of these things look very unsafe.
Could they even get insurance?
It would be very difficult. Yeah.
He's an insurance agent.
A, a lot of these things would be very difficult. They gotta, they gotta be fixed. And I don't think it's a reasonable return. I think what you're doing is gonna be able to be met. In my mind on this one, I wouldn't normally say that, but you've given us a lot of additional information.
Okay, so your position is a vote of-
Yes.
I, I agree. I mean, if, if anything happened to this place right now, if it burned down for any reason, I, I don't even know whether they could rebuild.
It could take two or three houses with it.
They, they said, uh, D E P said that if the property were, uh, ti- were lost due to storm, that would be the only way to rebuild. We didn't ask about fire. We didn't ask about that.
So there, so if you had a fire and destroyed the property, nobody would ever buy the lot, because you couldn't do anything with it?
Nobody's, yeah. Well, when, after, after going through this process, we thought we had a very valuable piece of property, but we thought it's a lot less valuable than it was with all the restrictions. Mostly, anybody would want that property would be for the location.
Well, thank you, 'cause that's another, that's another finding of fact for us.
The building and the limitations on the property are very limiting. Very.
That's a, that's a very honest finding fact. Thank you. All right, so your, your position is, uh, to vote yes?
Yeah.
Uh, I appreciate all the extra information that you guys provided for us. Um, and I will vote yes, along with, you know, going up. I think the bump out, I was kinda with the board that we would, I would have voted no, but, um, with going up, yes.
So, uh, just to make it clear, number one, uh, just a show of hands as to the yeses, and noes is none, so yeah, number one is answered, and we believe that it does meet the standards to allow for, uh, that, that this does, this cannot yield a reasonable return as it is sitting. And again, the fire issue, to me, the other houses are really, that's a big issue, 'cause it could take out numerous of so close. Okay, number two is, the need for variance is due to the unique circumstance of the property. Uh, and this cri- criteria applies to property, not people and/or uncommon conditions that are not shared by the neighborhood. And Mr. Blais, do you wanna start with this one?
It definitely is.
Do you want me to read that one? Currently, there are several-
Oh, yeah. Um, thank you. Should we read that in? I'm sorry, yes, please.
Currently, there are several, uh, major structural, mechanical, and electrical deficiencies of the house that need urgent attention. The roof is leaking and rotting in several areas. We have made efforts to repair it over the last few years, but according to building professionals, it now needs to be completely replaced. The fireplace and chimney have been deteriorating and have not been functional for many years. At this point, we need to have both dismantled and removed. Some of the walls and doorways are showing signs of movement, making it apparent that the building structure needs to be leveled and shored up. Plumbing and electrical in the building are antiquated and need to be replaced to meet current requirements. Plumbing pipes are original to the cottage and are galvanized. The one bathroom and kitchen out of this house are also in need, desperate need of being renovated and updated to today's use and function levels. While making all of the repairs noted above, family would like to increase the living space of the house, which our small lot currently prohibits. The request for variance is, I'll just read the first one.
Okay.
Raising the roof ridge. In replacing the rotting roof, we'd like to raise the ridge of the roof by four and a half feet without raising the height of the exterior walls. See attachment, through the attachment B. We would also add shed dormers, creating a story and a half structure, as we understand, if allowed by code and zoning. The new roof and dormers would then support our effort to come into greater compliance with the aesthetic requirements. The new roof and dormers would then support our effort to come into greater compliance with the aesthetic requirements of the new character code zoning recently adopted for Higgins Beach. And I, I don't, I don't need to read the next one.
Nope, uh, because we eliminate that section as, as a agreement here.
I agree with this a hundred percent, I mean, it's, it's definitely in disrepair, it's gotta be fixed, um, and it meets, meets the requirement, it's as far as I'm concerned.
I agree with Mr. Blaze, I mean, you've shown that the house is deteriorating and, you know, especially if you're gonna have renters in there, I think it's important to have it safe, so, yeah.
Yeah, I, I would say it's due to the unique circumstances of the property, as Mr. Longstaff had pointed out. You had, what did you have it in, the flood zone, the, I think you came up with three different things that it was in.
Must be sixteen, isn't it?
Flood zone, the, it's in a special flood hazard area, it's in the, uh, erosion hazard area, it's in the, uh, frontal dune, and it's in the, um, shoreline zone.
Plus they can't move back, plus they can't move backwards to the dunes, correct?
I think, I think eleven, uh, Cleveland.
Plus they can't move backwards in that seventy-five feet, 'cause they're prohibited by DEP, correct?
Right, they can't, they can't move any further away for obvious reasons, zoning and DEP, um, they can't move forward, they can't move sideways because it's a forty-foot lot. And, and what I wanted to bring up as far as the uniqueness of the lot, I think all of the other stuff is good information, but it doesn't really address the uniqueness of the lot. The one, only thing you needed to say there is it's a forty-foot wide lot, you're done.
(laughing). Good point, thank you.
And that's why I wanted to get his comments in about the other things too, because not, not only is it a forty-foot wide lot, but you've got every other variable possible going against it.
You can't touch the door, I am happy.
Is it? I didn't know, I have the phone. Okay, we'll do, we'll vote on that next week, um.
It's you, Mr. Chair.
Um, as far as the unique, the unique circumstances of the property, uh, Mr. Longstaff said it perfectly, I think also what you wrote is perfect, um, I have no problem with number two being met. So, all in favor of number two being met? That's unanimous, okay, number three, the, the variance will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood, and that means characteristics of the neighborhood such as density, development, large open space, and, or rural. Can we just start all the way down there?
Um, again, I mean, I think if we're just going up and not bumping out, I think that's great, and, um, I think any improvement that we make is gonna make it nice and, and make it better, yeah.
I agree, plus they're trying to bring it into compliance with the new, uh, character zoning.
I would agree, it, it's, I mean, you folks have stated several times that you're looking to increase the character of the neighborhood, I mean, even when the putting of the garage underneath, what you said was basically, it looked like crap. So, I mean, you're, you're definitely taking into account the character of the neighborhood and trying to do everything you can to withstand that, so we appreciate that, because that's a big thing that we have to look at, is we don't want one house down there that sticks out like-
We have one already.
I know, there's already, I wasn't gonna say it, but I know exactly which one it is, but it's, we're looking to try to keep people in realm a little bit, so that things look unified down there, and I appreciate the fact that you folks are taking that under concern and you've made great efforts to let us know that.
And they locked out.
They locked out, (laugh) for Brian. So, um, so, uh, I gotta tell you, I think you've done a pretty good job trying to meet the standards of the, of the new code, I think the design is attractive, so, I, I think you, I, I think that it helps. I think you have done the best you can based on the reality of the code, so I support this. So, number three, all in favor of that, number three is met.
Yes.
And, uh, that's unanimous, number four. The hardship is not a result of an action taken by the applicant or prior owner of the property, hardship must be caused by imposition of zoning restriction, not by action taken by the property owner, and so basically, the, the, the rules have all changed. These properties were allowed, they've built back a hundred years ago, you couldn't do this if you didn't want it to anymore. So, I have no problem with saying that hardship is not action, and the house is just tired, it's like anything, uh, the board goes, their comments?
Well, I think we still have something out there for the finding of fact, um, hardship's not taken by the owner or applicant, as a matter of fact. I think you folks have said you've had the roof repaired three times, so you've taken actions to actually prevent some of it from happening, so you haven't encouraged any of it, you haven't just let, been letting it fall down around itself, which is appreciated, because otherwise we could say, it was an action that you took, 'cause you just didn't take care of the house.
Yeah.
But you folks have been trying to take care of the house and get it repaired, so.
Well stated.
Mr. Crockett did a pretty good job there.
Yeah, seldom I say yep. (laugh) I, I agree. Okay, all in favor of number four being met? Okay, so, uh, I'd like to move that we approve the request eliminating the section regarding, uh, expansion, that we only allow for the footprint, and that it need to meet the current, uh, codes for elevation. If they choose to meet the current and future codes, that's fine, but the current, the new codes for elevation to be out of the flood zone, expecting that this is going to exceed the fifty percent trigger, which it will, and no one having to come back.
I'd just like to ask a question, uh, you made a statement before that, that you said that the DEP wouldn't allow you to tear it down and rebuild? There's a house right down at the end of the street that was torn down and rebuilt.
I don't know how, I, we asked-
Yeah, that was two years ago, I think.
We asked that question about, and maybe they're not in, that's the number of restricted zones that we're in, they're, it is, it's literally three, it's three houses down from us, and it was torn down and rebuilt brand new. We asked that question, but again-
What'd they say?
They said that it-
Oh, it's, uh, it, on the, uh-
Was not, it was not a, a good-
In the footprint, and that, uh, any details need to be dealt with, that, that the code enforcement officer, as the plans are developed.
Would you need to see a more defined plan, design, or, or height?
When they, when their building permit comes in, we'll deal with all of that stuff, I just wanna make sure that we're clear on what the request is. Um, according to the diagram, attachment B, it shows a four foot six, which is what you've put in your narrative here. Um, I don't think it matched what I originally had in my summary, I think I was three inches short. So, I wanna make sure that we, when we amend the decision, that it's for four foot six of additional height to the ridge, is that correct? Is that what we're asking?
Do you remember what yours was, Ryan?
I, I had it written differently, I went from fifteen foot six, which was your current, was your existing height, to nineteen nine, so that's four foot three inches, if my math is correct.
Okay.
And, and the diagram clearly shows four foot six, so I'm not sure whether that was an earlier drawing that I was going off, or if I read the, read the diagram wrong, I just wanna make sure that we get the right number.
We'll default with a higher number, we'll default with a higher number.
Now, we, now we've gotta resume our work with Travis and really get down to specific plans, footprints, and floor plans and all of that, and-
I think it might've been on the prior package.
Okay, so-
The fo, the four, four point sixes, or the four feet six inches is raising the roof.
Right.
The ridge, the ridge.
The ridge.
Yep.
He was just defining something, that was a different package.
Allow a half a story.
Well, the dorm, it allows you, then when you put the dormers on, then you do get head, headspace for sleep.
How much headroom are you gonna have, uh?
Pretty good, I, I think it, now, you mean?
I know.
With those dormers, I think you have full headspace out to, in the dormers, where the dormers are.
Where the dormers are, but now he's got a-
For short people, or?
(laugh) Yeah, it won't, you're gonna-
Thank, thank you.
Let me, um, so basically, my motion's on the table, anybody, uh, want to second that?
Second.
Okay, any additions or changes to that mo, that motion? Okay, all in favor of the motion? It's unanimous. So, uh, tomorrow, uh, yeah, I'm available tomorrow, so, i, in the next few days, just give the office a call. We're approving, we're approving this for you as, without the bump out. I believe you will find that, um, going through the remainder of the process will be fairly simple, but my advice would be, have somebody that knows what they're doing go with you. Um, it'll be a lot easier, and this is gonna be very easy for them to see, so they'll understand it. Okay, best of luck.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, take care.
They coordinated well today.
Okay, the next appeal, miscellaneous appeal, uh, by, uh, Alana, Alana Frank of Three Griffin Roads, this is map U thirty-three parcel fifty-one C. And, uh, somebody here, would like to take the microphone, state your name, address, and what you're trying to accomplish, okay?
Good day, my name, my name is Alena, uh, and Ryan, we are owners of, um, Three Griffin property in Scarborough. Uh, today we are here to represent our, uh, proposal for future improvements of our property. Back in twenty-eleven, Ryan and I, we purchased a house, which was in a very sad condition, but due to the budget constraints and everything, that was only one thing possible, but like I said, we took a price, uh, in the renovation of this, uh, property, and we did a tremendous amount of the, updates, electrical, plumbing, and, uh, new windows, siding, roofs, and, uh, going forward with all of those, um, projects, we considered, uh, the needs and the style of our neighborhood, uh, to be able to blend in and merge with the neighborhood. Um, so by doing all those renovations, we were able to achieve our goal, and we, um, increased the property value, but functionality, aesthetic look, and, um, all the above. Um, we have received a lot of, uh, thanks to, from our neighbors and for our improvements, and they wish us the best to continue on. Going forward, we would like to, um, add a shed, which is twelve by twelve for proper storage of our, our lawn equipment and the gardening tools, 'cause I love gardening personally, and when we bought the house, there was nothing planted, so, um, that's one of my, uh, to-do projects to make it all pretty. But unfortunately, I did find myself storing the lawn equipment and the gardening tools along the house is not aesthetically appealing. So, we are in a great need of, uh, proper storage for this equipment, as well as the garage, which would be twenty-six by twenty-six, um, to, um, add to our property for proper storage of the vehicle and the, um, tools, uh, for Ryan, as he likes to do woodwork and, uh, as his hobby, and, um, as, as well to blend in our neighbors on Orchard Street, as well as, um, Pine Point, and, um, around us on Oath Street, do have a garage, and some of the neighbors did express the need, um, to build one too, so they will be going forward with the same requests in the future. Um, considering the fact that Mr. Isber is developing these trees, um, I think it would be the best, uh, for us to go forward with this type of, um, improvement, same, simultaneously decrease the amount of, um, inconvenience for everybody, and simultaneously improve the value of the property and the static look. And, uh, the last, um, we would like to add a small, uh, porch, front porch, just to tie it all together, uh, to bring the static look back to the street and the property.
Thank you very much, um, Mr. Longstaff, anything to add on this, this different than I, um, than I understood it to be?
In, in what way?
Um, I thought it was more just about a garage, I don't know why.
No, there's actually three, three components that they wanted to add to the structure, and as I said in my staff comments, um, they were faced with the challenge of having a, a non-conforming existing structure and wanting to expand that non-conforming structure, um, which requires the miscellaneous appeal, unfortunately, that has to go to the planning board for an advisory opinion first and then come back to the board, and so that's the stage that they're at now. Um, if they wanted to modify the inside of the house, that would not be a problem, they, that's not considered an expansion, um, but adding the garage, the shed, and the porch is, and is, as silly as it may seem, that it has to come to the board for your approval on that, that's the way the ordinance is written, so that's what they're here to request.
And what tripped it is the TVC change of a few years back?
Whenever the zoning was changed from, I, I don't even know whether, I, I haven't gone back in history to find out what it was before, but yeah, the TVC zone does not allow single-family dwellings, at all, period. It's multi-family dwellings for residential uses, um, and, and maybe some townhouses, I can't remember, but single-family dwellings are not allowed, two-family dwellings are not allowed.
Isn't it just, okay.
So, when you get into the TVC, the other TVC districts, I think two and three, and maybe four, one or more of those districts will allow single-family dwellings, but not the TVC Town and Village Center district by itself.
But this house was there long before the zoning was changed.
Exactly, so it's, it's a grandfathered, it's what, the, the classic grandfathered house, it was there before the-
Pretty straightforward.
And I take it it meets all the setback requirements, everything?
Yes, yes.
So, if anybody wanted to do this in another area, all they would do is come to you and get a permit?
Exactly.
Eight twenty-five dollars.
Yep.
I've got just one question. Are we gonna refund their two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar fee to come before us?
You know, Ed, sometimes you put it perfectly, it's, it's a little, um. Mr. Blaze is very wealthy, so he might just kick that in.
The only thing I would add, Mr. Chairman, is that they did go to the planning board for the advisory opinion, they got a favorable opinion from the planning board, and as the zoning ordinance states, the, the zoning board cannot go against the planning board's advisory opinion without good cause, so they're here.
And there is just no good cause, we could spend a lot of time with this and follow all the rules, I would like to move that we just go right to the end, if the board is comfortable with it. I do not see the reason of doing, this is just a simple straightforward issue, if the board wants to, I'll go either way, doesn't matter to me.
What are you suggesting?
I'm suggesting that we approve it as requested.
What else?
Go move.
I haven't, I haven't opened the audience yet, but if there's no letters, and no, I mean, the audience, no letters, no phone calls, may I open the public, anybody from the public who should speak on this? Uh, no, um, uh, I'd move that we, it's just, this is a formality.
Go move.
It's just a, it's a formality.
I don't think we should-
You, you moved it in your second.
I moved it in my second, so right now we've got a motion on the table, if somebody disagrees with me, feel free to jump in, but I just don't see the reason of going through all the work for something that's so basic.
You don't, you don't wanna have the questions on record?
I don't have a problem with that, unless the board does.
I mean, this is entered on the record, the application is, so.
The application is, is, we're, what we're basically saying, and I'll say it, is part of the approval is that we're taking this information as face value, and this is going on the record as face value, and the planning board's recommendation, which I cannot in any way see how I could find anything to overturn that decision.
Right.
Their position on it, so based on that alone, I just don't think there's any reason to it, other than that, I'm not comfortable with the board though, whatever the board wants. So, we gotta move, it's, it's on the table as a motion, anybody?
It's my second.
And second, so discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor? Three, opposed?
Uh, no, I mean, but, I mean, I haven't really-
That's okay, it's up to you.
Haven't gotten all this stuff, so I don't know what, I'm really, it seems like we're just kinda rushing through this to me, so maybe I'm just missing something.
Um, well, let me slow down, just, we voted on it, but let me slow down just a bit. This is just a technicality because the zone changed three years ago. They put the TVC zone. They had to go to the planning board, because it's a single-family home in a TVC zone, and for whatever reason, you can have multi-family homes there, but you can't have a single-family home. There are other single-family homes on that street, not that one.
But we couldn't just go through the questions quickly?
We just, I don't see any reason, I, it's up to the, that, that's why I asked the board, and I didn't see anybody say anything other than, that, this, so that's why. So, I'll just ask for the vote again, and you can vote, no, that's okay.
I'll just, I, I guess I'll just abstain then.
Okay, that's fine, so.
They can't abstain, we have the floor, you can, you can, Captain.
Okay.
So, if you're not happy, voice that to the chairman, because they're gonna-
Do you wanna go through the questions?
Yeah, we, yeah.
Let's go through the questions then. Let's go through the questions then.
I just think we should, we, we do for everything else.
Just go through the questions then.
So what happens to this?
Uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pull back the motion, and would you pull back my second, your second? Pull back my motion. You're pulling back your second. So back to ground zero.
Permanently.
Okay. Okay, so what I'll do is I'll just read through, uh, the item, and you can just answer it, okay?
Sure.
Um... I'm just gonna get there.
There's, there's no, I, there, you have to...
Oh, I thought they were just...
You, no, they, they wrote a description, but these are the standards that need to be added.
There we go. The proposed use will not create unsanitary and healthy conditions by reason of sewage disposal, emissions to the air or water, or other aspects of its design or operation. No. The proposed use will not create unsafe vehicular or pedestrian traffic conditions when added to existing and foreseeable traffic in its vicinity.
God, no.
The proposed use will not create public safety problems which should be substantially different from those created by existing uses in the neighborhood or require substantially greater degree of municipal fire or police protection than existing uses in the neighborhood. I just say it verbally, so it's not recognized. Uh, proposed use will not result in sedimentation or erosion or have adverse effect on the water supplies.
No.
Proposed use will be compatible with existing uses in the neighborhood subject to physical size, visual impact, intensity of use proximity to other structures, and density of development.
No.
That'd be yes.
Yes. There's no impact on that.
It's a trick question, it's a trick question, just wanna make sure you pay attention. You're not in the flood zone.
No.
Uh, the applicant, you, you own the property?
Yes.
Um, if we do something ridiculous, you could pay for it? Just say yes. Uh, the proposed use will be compatible with existing uses in the neighborhood respective generation of noise and hours of operation. You're gonna live there, right?
Yeah, we live there.
Okay. Uh, my motion, uh, again, is to prove as requested. Let's go move. Discussion on the motion.
Again, just to back up the findings, this is a garage, a shed, and a front porch for residential use.
And everything is met. And if this was in any other zone, it would be fine.
And it was a favorable finding from...
And, yeah, and if anybody can think of a reason to deny the planning board, I can. So that's my motion. All in favor? Four, there you go. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Okay? Let's see.
I just wanna get you guys going. Just move forward.
I just figured...
Keep, keep momentum going.
Okay, the next appeal is from... A special exception from Angela Grover, one-seventy-six Broad Turn Road. This is map R twenty-five, one A. And, uh, if you'd like to take the microphone and, uh, state your name and address, which I can assume is Angela Grover?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, feel, explain what you're trying to accomplish, and we'll go from there, all right?
Um, I live at one-seventy-six Broad Turn Road, and I have a cabinet business, um, for sales. And I wanna take our detached garage and convert it into a place where I can just display the cabinets so people can come there and just be able to see them, touch them, you know? And that's basically it. That it shouldn't change anything, um, there's... Nothing will change on the outside, um, everything will stay the same, just the inside. I'll be using it just to house the cabinets.
When you say house the cabinets...
Yeah, just to have a few displays there for people to look at.
Do, do you currently meet people at home or at their homes or...
I don't, not currently. This is a startup in two thousand and fifteen, and we just bought the house in June of this year. So I decided I will start there and will hopefully start there in the garage. And so it's just a startup, so I wanna be able to get going with the business. So I thought I'd use, start with a garage and convert it.
Do you carry a specific line or are you a...
Yep, I'm a reseller.
Okay. Of multiple lines or just one line?
One line, yes.
Um, I'm just looking up the definition of, uh, uh, home occupation. Uh, the rules regarding that, no, office, not that.
Can you let me find the definition for you?
Not the definition, but the requirements for home occupation.
Okay, so you're in the Performance Standards, section nine?
Yeah. Update my book. Make it easy, thank you. Let's just go right through the Home Occupation Standards, then we'll come back to the Special Exception. Uh, okay, so, uh, the occupation of the profession shall be carried out wholly, uh, within the principal residence or within the building accessory there too. You're saying you're just going to be doing this in your garage?
Exactly, yes.
Is your garage heated or is it...
It's not heated at this time, but I was planning on putting a pellet stove in there.
Okay. Um, the home occupation shall be clearly incidental and secondary to use of the dwelling unit for residential purposes. So this is a new business, and you're just detesting the waters of it?
Exactly, yes.
No more than one person who is a, not a resident of the dwelling unit shall be employed in a home occupation.
Correct.
Just you yourself.
Just myself at the time.
Uh, exterior signs per, uh, permitted, uh, with the Home Occupation Sign Provisions under section, um, twelve, a sign regulation, section, subsection E, that's, uh, you're allowed with three, a six-square-foot sign, three-by-two sign.
Right.
And you're aware of that?
Yes, I am.
Is that what you want?
Yes.
Okay. And you're gonna put it down in an appropriate location? And you're gonna have an open sign on it, or you're gonna have a, how are you gonna...
I'm, I'm gonna do by appointment only to start and, yeah.
So what are you gonna do if somebody just drives in, they see the sign, they drive in, right?
Well, seeing the sign, um, obviously I'll be marketing it, um, through, you know, newspapers and, um, direct mailers and different things. So they can contact me and I can make an appointment with them.
Is this sign gonna be like a phone call, a phone number? Is this sign gonna be a phone number or a web address?
Yep, um, basically probably just the, uh, name of the business and the phone number.
Okay. Um... You're not having any exterior displays, you're not having truckloads delivered? There's nothing gonna be delivered there?
No, if, um, if there is an order, um, they would deliver it to the house. And I would put it into the garage until it's either picked up or I deliver it to the residents.
Okay, walk me through that, uh, we'll come back to that, we'll come back to that. But, um, uh, no nuisance shall be generated, including but not necessarily offensive noise, vibration, dust, uh, odors, heat, or glare. And the traffic generated by such a occupation shall not increase the volume of traffic so as to create, uh, traffic hazards or disturb the residential character of the neighborhood.
Right, that's correct.
Okay. And what about your parking? Explain, uh, explain your parking situation, your driveway and...
Okay. Um, from the road on Broad Turn to just the house is ninety-five feet. So that driveway is actually further with the garage. So I have all of that room, plus I have a secondary, a side, um, driveway where people can park as well.
Uh, with a separate entrance or just a hammerhead? You, you mean like a...
It's just aside, yeah, I mean, it's just, um...
So it looks like an R?
Um...
Small letter R.
It just go, the driveway goes straight and then on to the left. There's just an extra parking spot or two.
All right. Um, you're not using twenty percent of the, the property, is, is this gonna matter on that? That's fine. Um, and, uh, for the limitations, the total area devoted to retail sales limits to four hundred square feet. It must be fully enclosed within the building, so how many square feet is the garage? I think I saw that somewhere.
I believe it's a, yeah, it's a twenty by twenty.
Garage?
They're under, they're under the requirements, okay.
And, um, it's secondary accessory to the unit, okay. Uh, it can include retail sales subject to following limitations. We talked about the four hundred feet, sale products limited to products and articles produced, assembled, or processed on the premises and seafood caught or harvested off the premises by persons who reside in the dwelling unit or by one employee, employees. Um... So, can you...
So she's not selling the prod, she's not selling the product on the premise. She's displaying the product on the premise. She's displaying it.
There's a difference.
She's not selling, she's not taking cash at the premises and selling them the cabinet and letting them park office. Demonstrational, she's a consultant, correct?
Exactly.
Yeah.
Okay.
She's a reseller. So she's demonstrating the project, product, so it's no, there's no sales on the pro, on the, uh, on the, on the, uh, property.
Under some, she's, she's not having things delivered. So if she's having things delivered to her house and they're picking it up, wouldn't that be sales?
No.
Where does the sale take place?
No. They, they, the cabinets aren't gonna be delivered to you, they're gonna be delivered to the job site, correct?
It could be either. It just depends on where they are.
But if they're delivered to you, then you're taking them to the job site.
Or they're picking them up.
Or they're picking them up.
Just depends on...
So are you selling product at the garage? My understanding was there was not sales at the garage.
No, see, they are gonna look, they're gonna be able to look at it. They, if they wanna place an order, I will place the order for them. And then it can be delivered to their residents. It, I could hold on to it for them, um, it just depends.
I, I think you're gonna be caught having to do direct ship, um, 'cause I don't think the, the, uh... That's why I wanted to go right to this immediately, is because I, it doesn't really allow for that to be... Otherwise, you're retail, you're retail establishment. Second, you start selling things other than those items.
Unless you're building the cabinets.
Um, I am building them. They are coming in not put together as they're, I will have to put them together unless they have somebody on site who...
It says products and articles produced, assembled, or processed from...
Amazing how words can change things back and forth. They're not assembled, so they come in and box...
No, they're not assembled.
Flat boxes.
Exactly. So they have that choice. If they have, um, a contractor that wants to put them together, then have at it, they can put them together. But I would be putting them together.
No, I just, I just brought some cabinets.
We don't care, let's move on.
No, I have a question. I care about how they come though. Some of them came complete, some of them came folded up. I just, well, I don't know that the statement is necessarily accurate, that those cabinets don't... I need to get that clarified. Most of the time I've seen cabinets come in both ways. You get to see a place where they just come in boxes and you put them together other than...
The way, the company I use, that's all, that's all they do.
So it's strictly flat?
Whoever they're selling to throughout the United States, they're saying, um, they're all unassembled. You have to assemble them.
Okay. And getting that on the record for a reason, because to begin with, that's an important issue. If they were coming in assembled, that doesn't allow, that doesn't meet that requirement.
They're not assembled.
Okay.
And even Home Depot now is even shipping doors and cabinets separate. With the hinges, do you have to put them on in a...
I just need to get it clarified, um... So, thank you. Um, you're not doing more reasons?
Sorry.
That's okay. All right, so let's go back to, uh, the...
Hi, you've been with Larry.
You just messed it up on him on purpose.
Okay. So I'm gonna go through these, okay? Uh, the proposed use will not create unsanitary and helpful conditions by reason of sewage disposal and emissions to the air or water or other aspects of its design or operation. And the proposed use will not create unsafe vehicular or pedestrian traffic conditions when added to existing and foreseeable traffic in its vicinity.
Yeah.
What kind of vehicles come, is it, is it a tractor-trailer truck that comes in, or is it like a UPS or...
Um, probably a tractor-trailer, I mean, if they have to drop off products and they're spending...
And, um, they, they could turn around tractor-trailer, snap, give us...
Um, I believe they would have to park on the road and, um, work with it off. I think, I'm not sure how they...
Most places don't have both those.
Okay, maybe it's not work, but they... It comes on, from a pallet, so however they take...
Most times when you're getting direct shipped, they, uh, they actually have to have something, uh, at your site.
No, they, they do have something, um...
Okay.
Yeah, some of the trucks now come with the lift that goes down and they have a pallet jack right there.
It's one of those lifts, you know?
Here, here's what I'm worried about. You're okay with this?
But how do you get them now?
Doesn't...
You're, you're in the business now, right?
It's a startup.
You had a delivery yet?
Not yet, no. But it would be on the road, so it would come from the road and get a tractor-trailer.
Have you seen a delivery made?
Um, at other places, um... It's been there, so I wasn't at the time. But it was on a pallet when, so I don't remember.
How did the pallet get off the truck?
Yeah.
The proposed use not create public, uh, safety problems which should be substantially different from those created by existing uses in the neighborhood or require substantially greater degree of fire and municipal protection than existing uses in the neighborhood. You're staying in the winter time, on that road, you're okay with a tractor-trailer truck on the road and bringing it up? As long as you're okay with that, I just...
They're not there long.
My understanding that the product coming gets off.
Okay.
I have seen tractor-trailers parked by the side of the road with pallets on, on the project. Is it safe for anybody else to get a washer, dryer, dock, off your house on a tractor-trailer? I can, I can tell you.
I've seen loads of, yeah, with tractor-trails, I had a warm oak, it was some...
It's very different, it's very different with a person getting something from a old...
Right.
In your home.
Maybe the question, Chairman, the question is how, how often would a delivery come?
Um, again, it's a startup, um, right now, once a month.
How often would you think you'd, you'd have a box truck as a trailer? Probably not gonna be very common you're gonna have a trailer truck delivering that much product, right?
Well...
Oh, yeah.
It is, it is a good question, how is the question? Can you, yeah, clarify it?
I'll be candid with you, I don't have, you can, the issue, I really don't know right now. I don't want to let you guys know where I'm standing. I don't have information. Say, hold on a second. I don't know anything about the product. I, could affect the neighbors. I don't wanna see this push through just buzz. And I, I don't know whether or not it's a four-trucks, a pallet truck, a double-trailer truck, I don't know whether or not it's a UPS truck. The one thing I know, I don't think we can, and that's more important than anything. I think, but I would like to, go make a decision, a plan. What's gonna happen, how it works, what your, what your business model is, how, with the company flyer that's, uh... Most things you order, going from experience, the thing you order that's, uh, probably fires it, crap, booklet.
So I have, when I contacted the company because, um, for, for the people, he said, because I wanted to like what shipping charges to be, they said it would be a tractor-trailer. Um, so I, I would, it would be a tractor-trailer because you're... I don't...
This is, I guess, comes back to my point. Okay to not know, I just don't, can't, we don't have enough information to make a decision. So I'm gonna move to give a full information. And I would be looking for is how a company works, models, but, but other, other distributors, uh... Just really going to, what, what, what is reasonable going? Monks is, please, what does this really look like? And I, you know, you don't have those answers here. And I'm not trying to stop, it's not a fight, I need, I need your fighting champion to prove. I don't...
But, Chairman, you already said one shipment a month. She's already answered some of your questions, so I think you're being a little bit...
Maybe.
I just wanna bring that out. You're, you're not listening to her answer either.
That may be true, but I'm, I'm, I'm moving to table for more information. For a second? And if it is, if there isn't, then we could just move on with these questions.
One second.
So I'm moving for more information, second, undebatable. Anybody, uh, all in favor of table, any, for more information? Three, four?
I, I think it would be helpful if, if you get, get us some pictures of the area so we can see what...
I did get pictures. I did a Google map of the, the lot, my action from, I'm on Broad, you know, the pile of, it's a straightaway. I'm not on any curve.
I read the packet, but my concern is, my concern is, is what is this, in other words, it is not zoned for a, it, it's a residential zone. But it's actually not, it's, um, um... But, but I think, what I would do, I can tell you what I do, but what I would do is I'd get the package program, how it works. They, you know, like, product A is focused on the web, how it works, the package is in flat boxes, they... located on the web, how it works, the package, flat boxes, they drop off, no big deal, they drive whatever vehicle it takes, they have their own equipment, they drop, and, and first, to get at least, uh, whatever.
The only answer I don't know is, is, it's, first of all, is the drop thing, but I know that it's, I come on a tractor trailer, and I believe it's, whatever, however the tenant from a tractor trailer to my house, I don't know, I know the rest of that.
See, I can't tell from pictures, can't tell from the property, it looks like it has a turn in there, I don't know if that goes out, does that go out into the road, is that like a turn or, or the tree star can turn in there and go back out through the road, so if someone came in with, so, push your guy, it'd be difficult to get a truck.
But you would not be able to park right on the road, it's, uh, it's a mile or two away, um...
But I, but I really can't...
Hot, I'm not gonna be bothering anybody.
Well, I know, but what I really can't is like, get us some pictures so it's just a little bit better, and where you, where you think the trailer's gonna park to be, that's gonna impact traffic coming, so we, what it looks like down there, you can't, try to Google it, it's all wooded up.
It is all wooded, um, right across, it's, um, they're two acre lots, they're high air, straight away there, not gonna attack, I mean...
It, it's been tabled at this point for, really further discussion, it has been, but, I, I'm just giving you something to just give us more information so that when you come back.
So you need more pictures?
I, I think it'd be helpful, I'm sorry, but...
I, I would get a full package of how it all works, yeah.
Yeah, I think I'm really interested in how often the deliveries are gonna be, as someone who commutes...
Well, that's the thing, it's a startup, I don't know, I mean, it, it's...
Yeah, I think it's someone who commutes that road, who, you know, who lives on that road, I mean, people go really fast, and I think especially in the winter, you know, and, and I think a neighbor, you know, home occupation is one thing, but if suddenly the neighbor starts seeing a tractor trailer every week, I think then, I think it kind of goes against what zoning is there, I mean...
To me, if, if you were saying that you were running a business without having any deliveries at your home, bang, approved, I'd have no problem.
Well, why can't I?
But...
Is there a way I can do that then? I mean, that's another option, I mean, I could have a central warehouse, like...
Well, it's, it's been tabled unfortunately, so we're, we're done with it right now.
Okay.
What, what I would recommend is, if you wanna do that, bring it back that way, and that, but I asked that question very bluntly, and you said, no, you were gonna have it, and that's why I asked that question, so, I'm not trying to make it difficult for you, I'm really not, but I also don't wanna just say no because I don't understand it, and I'm not willing to accept that you don't know, so, that's for me, and that's why I voted to table it. I, I can talk to Mr. Longstaff and, and kind of get my thoughts to him, and then you can talk to him and, and get a better feel, but, but, just again, if any board member wants to kick in, I'm looking for ideally that you don't have deliveries at your house, number one, that would be my preference, because I don't know what that looks like long term. If you have to have deliveries at your house, fine, I wanna know how it works, I wanna know...
That's how I was just gonna start it, because, I mean, with a startup, I'm not gonna go out and spend money on a warehouse if it's not gonna work.
Right, but you're only gonna be doing, I'm assuming you're buying it for somebody specifically and then bringing it directly to their property.
That is gonna happen.
So that's two things.
But sometimes I have to, it just depends on what they wanna do.
Good point.
Yeah, that, that, see, it's two, two, now you've got two trucks going, because you gotta, and have a truck that's going to take it, so now you've, and furthermore, that's what, that's the kind of things I think you need clarified, the other thing is, I do think we're pushing the envelope with assembled, I don't know many cabinets that are just flat, I mean, other than buying something that's stable, they'll come flat, that's about the only thing I know, that comes flat, I mean, the other things, so that's, those are the issues that I need clarified, for me, board members, any other comments? None, okay, thank you, I... You'll be first on the agenda in, in January, ma'am, so you know. Next is a limited reduction of yard size appeal by Warren Kristen Val, Val Manass, thirty-five Windsor Homer Road, system map U nineteen, process sixteen, uh, it's, uh, appeal number twenty-five ninety-five, and, uh, welcome, state your name, sir.
Uh, Walter Wilson from Design Company, representing Val Manass, this application to the board. Um, this, I'm, I'm, I'm a little forgetful here for a moment on this job as to what packet was sent to the board as far as the floor plan goes, and the reason I say this, this, this is a, a job that's, I'm drawing on almost every other day, and I can't remember what point I gave you a plan as to what it showed, um...
I moved to table.
Do you want, Walt, do you want mine?
Could I take a look at it, please?
Yeah.
Brian O'Quinn, we're obviously more than just, uh, yes, just one.
You can take more than that, just take it back to you.
There's an awful lot of paperwork for, when they're reducing the yard size.
Okay, that's the one I got.
Oh.
Okay, excuse me for that, um, you have in your packet, the, uh, survey site plan of the property, um, with a house way up at the street side, with a lawn lot that goes down the margin of the way overlooking the water, and you can tell by the survey, the house is real close to the, to the west, to the left property line, that's the existing house as it is today, well, footprint wise, and what we would like to do on the back of the house in your packet is to put a porch from the back of the house, it involves a little bit of infringement on the fifteen foot setback, a triangular piece, three and a half feet out, going down to zero, down to zero in that little footprint, and that's the only thing we're here for as far as any reduction goes, is that little triangular piece. Now, the reason for that triangular piece on the porch deck, that end of the house has a big bay built out in the back of the house, and from the inside of the house right now, there is no access to the yard out in the back, and there's no existing porch on the house right now, so you, you go in the house, you get this nice house down in this section of the town, and there's no deck, there's no view. Also, the grade from the house going to the back drops ten feet down to the rear of the house, and the porch we're putting on does two things, it gives outdoor space from the first floor, and by grading with the foundation wall under the porch, we can raise the grade up to create a more usable back space in the side of the property. Now, if you do that and put a deck on that looks right, it should wrap around to meet the character of the house with the bay window, and that creates that little piece back encroaching on the sideline, and that's why we want that, uh, little, uh, sideline variance to put that upside porch and make it look compatible with the design of the house.
Which is the last page.
You're the last page?
Yeah.
Yeah, but what portion is...
Two of them.
Yeah.
It's easiest to see it on...
That piece right there, there's, there's the setback line, there's the eleven and a half, and this part right here encroaches.
This part over here?
Yep, a little piece.
Also, just out of curiosity, is the garage, it looks like the garage isn't even on the property.
Uh, yeah, you're right, it's not. It never has, well, it never has been on the property, but it's not in the location that it started in.
(laughing).
It started over on the other side and then got shifted to that side back who knows how long ago, but it's never been on the property.
Yeah, why bother you? Okay, so, um...
Typical Prouds neck.
Why don't we go through the limited reduction of yard size requirements? Uh, there's, you think, uh, building and structures on and off the lot, uh, we're limited reduction of yard size request directed prior to nineteen ninety-one, uh, I'm assuming, when was this built, you remember?
When was it built, Walt?
When was it built?
Yeah.
Uh, over a hundred years ago, there's, uh, records of it being there in eighteen eighties, and it was, uh, uh, used as a summer home, and, um, over the years, there hasn't been much done to it on the inside, it's still the old kitchen from nineteen twenties, the old clawfoot tubs and the original plumbing, uh, most of it was open stud framing, open rafter framing, and it's a typical summer cottage house, even though it's large.
Large cottage. The requested reduction is reasonably necessary to permit the owner or the occupant of the property to use and enjoy the property in essentially the same manner as other similar properties are utilized in the zone, that's probably the most difficult one, right?
Yeah, the requested reduction is for the location of the exterior deck, and actually it's a part of the exterior deck, and it was reasonably necessary in order for the owner to enjoy the property, the proposed deck will allow for an outdoor space from the first floor that is not currently available, and like I said, the back of that house is ten feet off the ground from the first floor, and so this deck that's going on is not only for outside space, but also to put a, a foundation wall under it so we can raise the grade up around the back of the house.
Is that one of the reasons, the major reasons that you need to do that?
That's one of the major reasons, the, the, the property's undergone a lot of landscaping work already on it, which I know Brian has seen, a landscape architect and, uh, um, arborist, and we've had all kinds of, uh, vegetation removed and brought in to create the backyard, and that's one of the reasons for the deck so they can view their investment in the backyard.
That's a weak thing, yeah, we can hear, uh, due to the physical features of the lot and the location of existing structures on the lot, it would not be practical to construct the proposed expansion, enlargement, or the new structure in conformance with the currently applicable yard size requirements.
Yeah, the existing building's located when the easterly setback of the property line angles towards the rear of the house, in order to construct a deck that is compatible with the character of the house of variances requested for that small portion, the grading wall at the base of the deck will also allow for a walkable rear yard around the property, which then, of course, allows for the owner to, uh, enjoy the use of his property, which he couldn't do prior to very well.
And the impacts of the, and effects of the enlargement, expansion of the infrastructure of existing uses of the neighborhood will not be substantially different from a greater than the existing impacts and effects of the building or structure which conforms to the yard size requirements.
In my opinion, there won't be any difference whatsoever for the small little piece.
Yeah, I haven't started yet.
Not on the deck, we have started work on the house, and like I say, it's an ongoing thing, and plans are being developed as the work is being done.
Okay, um, any letters or an open to public to this, there's nobody here from the public, there's an open public hearing, do you have any letters or phone calls, any?
No, we did not.
Close the public hearing, anything to add, Mr. Longstaff?
Uh, no, the only thing I would, I would bring up is the fact that, you know, the limited reduction of yard size is for a small sliver of the deck, which, by the way, is the, the rest of the house behind the deck is way more into the setback than the little piece of deck that they're asking for the limited reduction of yard size for, so, you know, as far as the request for limited reduction of yard size goes, this one, to me, is, it's, it's not even as bad as the rest of the structure that already is existing there, so, um, it, it does try to, I think what the attempt is, and as Walt said, is to try to make the deck somewhat symmetrical and give it a stopping point where it makes sense, rather than stop it back halfway through, um, that, um, sort of bowed part of the house, you see that?
Yep.
It, it, it just, it just wouldn't look quite right to stop it back behind the line, it doesn't have a good ending point, as minor as that is compared to the rest of the structure that's already encroaching.
It's gotta be kind of fun, I would say.
I, I don't see where this is a major issue, um, is it reasonably necessary to enjoy the, I don't know if it is or not, but it does make sense to do what they're trying to do.
And you did mention something about tying it together and making, from a, from a still point of view, and the...
Yeah, it, the base of the deck allows for the regrading around that, that walkable backyard.
Open the board for questions, comments, or a motion.
Who, who owns the land that the garage is on?
Um, well, I would assume it's not the owner.
Does the owner have any idea whose land his garage is sitting on?
Well, it's in the right of way, so whoever has the ownership of the right of way.
On town land?
Probably, probably the Prouds neck association.
Oh, that's, that's right, that's not Public Road?
Right.
If you recall, this, this, uh, property actually came before the board some, some months ago, last year.
On the front, right?
Yeah, they actually wanted to, they actually wanted to tear the house down, they basically said it couldn't be saved, and, and now we've got an owner who wants to save it and is putting his resources into that, and, um, they're doing a bang up job out there, so, it's interesting.
Yeah, the house itself is, is relatively stable and strong, straight, it can, you know, easily be redone, fixed up, which is what the owner wants to do, as a matter of fact, that's the only reason the owner bought the property, because he wanted to maintain that building.
Thank you for not saying it's got good bones, I'm so tired of that one, one too good.
I'm sorry, Mike.
Thanks for not saying it's got good bones, I'm so tired of that line on TV. All's got good bones, huh?
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Motion to approve as presented with the additional information from Mr. Longstaff, stating that the house is already well for into, and the garage is not even on the property.
Second, discussion of the motion. See enough, on favor? At you end.
Again, thank you very much.
I'm glad you said that train's already left the station.
Okay, um, Mr. Longstaff, anything?
I need the garage of someone else's property.
Anything to add tonight?
I don't, other than Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year to the board.
Same to you.
Okay.
Same to everybody out there watching.
Any board, uh, members, any comments?
No.
Merry Christmas.
Do you have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
On favor? We are adjourned.